Okay, good evening, everybody. It is 6:00 PM, November 17th, 2020. Welcome to our council meeting. I'm gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order. We've been going at these meetings now, I think, for three, four, five weeks straight, so this will be the last one for a couple of weeks. We've got Thanksgiving next week and everything, so we will see how tonight goes. We do have some budget discussion and some other things to talk about tonight, so in the spirit of moving forward and moving on, here we go, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty for all. Okay, Ms. Huffman, with the roll call, please.
Mayor Ortega.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lauer.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Estes.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Geek.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
All members virtually present.
Okay, thank you. As many of you probably saw today, the governor added a whole nother color to our dial. We went up to red last Friday. And so, no, orange, sorry, orange in the county. And so, they're really pushing the hospitals beds and everything. It's just everything's at capacity. I had a phone call with the governor and a couple of the mayors locally, and they they just wanted to stress that, please use the same message with everyone. Just, we're trying to social distance, do the mask thing, that's a big one. And a lot of people feel like it's not worth it, but I can tell you, in my house, we went through the whole quarantine and everything, and it's worth it, it does help. And so, just be aware of that. The feeling from the, I got from the governor is that he does not want to shut anything down. Mainly because we can't kill off our businesses and those things, so if everyone just adheres to those rules, we can keep moving forward on some of this stuff until a vaccine, whichever one it is that comes through, is being used, so you know, best practices when you're out and about, if you need to go out. If you can stay home at all, just stay home. And we'll hopefully get through this quicker. They're also looking at opening a special session with the legislature to try and see how they can provide some relief for the businesses and things as well. They're really taking the hit now. With that, I also want to, where we would normally talk about resolutions, we inadvertently missed to put one on, though we voted on it in the past, and I think it's just a resolution in perpetuity. It's for the Small Business Saturday, and just to ensure that we are, so everyone knows that we at the city, we encourage everyone to not only on Small Business Saturday, but as many, as much as you can, please visit the small businesses as long as they're open and try to help them out. They're the ones who take the biggest hits in these crises like this, and everything we can do to help them, we'll do that, so with the proclamation, I'm starting on a resolution. So with that, we're gonna go ahead and keep moving forward. We have no presentations tonight, nor do we have board commission committee appointments. Actually, let me see, real quick. We have Mr. Rick, Ms. Hill, and Ms. Kircher. Paul, they've heard this field before on how to use the thing, so I'm just gonna go ahead and forego that, so we can keep moving forward. We're gonna go right into City Council Agenda Requests and Announcements. So I'm gonna go ahead and start with Ms. Dietrich Duncan.
Okay, good evening to everyone. I'm just, as we're talking about the governor, he signed a proclamation yesterday to make the third week in Colorado the recycle and compost week, Colorado Recycle Week. So I would like to encourage everyone in the city of Fountain, if you have recycling, we have a recycling center on 301 East Iowa Avenue, and it's open on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, from 10 to 1:00. And it's open the first Saturday of the month, from 9:00 to 12:00. And they are in need of volunteers. So if you're able to volunteer, they would appreciate your help. It also creates jobs for, you know, recycling also creates jobs and saves our environment. Per the youth, we are having a scarf and hat donation, and the locations are located on the flyer that's posted on the Fountain website. So if you would please visit our Fountain webpage and share on your social media outlets, we would appreciate that. That's all that I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Geek?
Nothing for me tonight.
All right, thank you. Mr. Applegate?
Nothing tonight.
Ms. Estes?
I have nothing tonight.
Mayor Protem?
Nothing tonight for me, thank you.
And Ms. Thompson?
Sorry, it took me a minute to rearrange something here on the page to get to the unmute button. I would like to throw out my hearty congratulations to Sylvia and her Parks crew on the place structures and the ADA accessibility up at Fountain Mesa Park. Sylvia, I don't tear up very often, and that park made me tear up. It was beyond my expectations of what I saw up there, and especially when we're being asked to social distance, again, new play equipment is a fantastic asset to our city. And I hope everyone gets up there to get the chance to really, really enjoy that. And if nothing else, drop by and see it, and again, hats off to the Parks Department, everybody that worked really, really hard to make that happen. I really, really appreciate it, and thanks to all the staff who's been meeting with us to meet me this week, going over different budget stuff. It's always good to get it in the brain a couple of different times, and Dietrich, I dropped you off a bag in your hat and glove thing earlier today.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Thompson. The only other thing I have to add to that for an announcement is we have our new Christmas tree lighting this year. Right in front of City Hall, I actually drove by on my way to get my flu shot and saw the tree, and I I like the setup that they put together for the, kind of where it sits in. So it's already looking a little more festive there in front of City Hall. That'll be Friday night at 6:00 PM. We are registering people, because we're only allowed up to 75, so if you know of anybody who is planning on going, please make sure they get online and register so they can get in. Unfortunately, we won't have our choir that we normally have, because the school is going to e-learning, starting on Thursday. And so they've canceled all after-school activities with that as well, so just so everyone's aware, we'll still have some music going, and I think Scott was trying to volunteer my family, but I think we will have Scott up there with Todd, and they'll have microphones and be singing some Christmas carols to the rest of us, so we look forward to hearing you guys sing, so I can't wait on that one. With that, we will move right on to our public to be heard. All items listed under, no, citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. We ask that you email your questions to the city clerk prior to the meeting at councilmeetings@fountaincolorado.org. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but we'll direct staff to follow up. And out of respect for the council and others in attendance, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. And I know we did get one email tonight, Ms. Huffman, did you wanna or should I just present who this is, or how do we wanna do that?
Absolutely, I just wanted to make note that Ms. Kircher is on the line, and I forwarded a PowerPoint presentation to all the city council this evening on her behalf.
Okay, Susan, I did unmute you. You will need to turn your mic on, there you go. If you have a camera and you wanna get on, you can do that as well. I think, maybe not, I don't know on that one, actually. I think it's just a microphone, so go ahead and speak, Ms. Kircher. Okay, let me, I hope you can hear me, we can't hear you, I don't know if anybody else can. Okay, Ms. Kircher, I don't know if you're we're giving her, she, looks like she logged in again, let me
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes, there you go.
So sorry about that. I'm representing the group Fountain Together and People and Pollinators. My name is Susan Kircher. I provided wildflower seed packs to everybody on city council, and Sylvia also. And they're a representation of the seed packs I'd like to distribute throughout the city of Fountain, all the neighborhoods, to encourage people to plant them at this time of year. And then they'll work their way through the soil over the winter. The seeds will harden, and they will come out at their appropriate time in the spring. And this will help provide habitat and shelter for the pollinators here in town. If anybody is interested in receiving the seed packs other than you guys, please go to fountaintogether.org, and I will mail you out a seed pack. That's fountaintogether.org. And also, there's a wonderful group called PeopleAndPollinators.org, and they have a lot of information about saving the bees and other pollinators. And you can take the Pollinator Pledge, which is, don't use pesticides, provide shelter, and you know, just try to help them out as much as you can, so that's PeopleAndPollinators.org. And that's all I have for tonight, and I want to thank you very much for listening.
Okay, thank you, and Ms. Huffman let us know that the seeds came in, and so and you said there's one for all the council members?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so just go on in, and she'll have those if you guys would like to take those and plant them if you have a spot in your yard or whatever. So yeah, I already got a spot already picked out, so thanks for doing that, Susan.
Great, thank you.
And then, I don't have any other, okay, yeah, thank you for doing that. Ms. Huffman, were there any other emails that you were aware of?
No, sir, that was the only email. I just noticed that Mr. Rick does have a question.
Okay, he said he had no questions on the chat, and I don't see anybody else with their hand up. Okay, we are gonna go ahead and keep moving forward. We just did a public to be heard, we're gonna move on to our consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine, or be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen or requests, in which case the item may be removed. I just realized we only have one, I'm not gonna redo the whole thing. It's just our minutes, so what would council like to do with our minutes from the last meeting? Mr. Geek?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, and Ms. Duncan?
I second.
All right, we have a motion and second for approval of our consent agenda. Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
I vote yes, but I'd like the record to reflect, I did send a correction to Joni and Sylvia.
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson, that correction has been made.
Thank you.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you, and so we're gonna move into old business, we have none tonight. So let's go straight into new business, 9B. So let me look here. 9A, no, 9B, C, and D are all along the same lines, is this correct?
That is correct.
Or is it just, okay, so I'm going to go ahead and open all three of these, well, two of them are public hearings, and then, so Sylvia, you, I know we went over this, do I need to read every one of those in before we talk about each one of them? We're gonna do it all together?
Yes, each title has to be read into the record.
Okay, so give me a few seconds here, everybody. I'm gonna read in each item that we're gonna do tonight, because they're all around the same thing, so Chrissy's gonna kinda take care of everything. So I'll read them in, I'll open to the two public hearings at the same time. We'll go through the discussion, everything we need to do. And as we need to vote on each one, I will, we'll vote on item B. I'll close the public hearing to item C, we'll vote on that. And then, item D, we'll close the public hearing and vote on that, so just to kinda try to kill two birds with one stone here and move forward, but as she said, I gotta read through all of them to start, so I will go ahead and do that now. Item 9B, Resolution 20-092, a resolution setting for findings of fact and conclusions based thereon regarding the eligibility for annexation of the city of Fountain Territory, known as Fountain Electric Substation Edition, generally located southeast of the intersection of Link Road and Mark Shuffle Road, including a portion of the Mark Shuffle Road right away from Link Road east to Furlong Circle, and here and after, more specifically described in Exhibit A. Item 9C, I'm open in a public hearing, and first reading of ordinance number 1755, an ordinance annexing to the city of Fountain that area to be known as Fountain Electric Substation Edition, generally located southeast of the intersection of Link Road and Mark Shuffle Road, including a portion of the Mark Shuffle Road right away from Link Road east to Furlong Circle, and here and after, more specifically described in Exhibit A. And item 9D, I'm open in another public hearing, and a first reading of ordinance number 1756, and ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Fountain, Colorado, to planned industrial PI district related to that area to be known as Fountain Electric Substation, generally located southeast of the intersection of Link Road and Mark Shuffle Road, and here and after, more specifically described in Exhibit A and Exhibit B. I will let Ms. Martinez take it away.
Thank you, good evening. Chrissy Martinez at the city of Fountain Planning Department. The first item that was read into the record are the statutory findings of facts for the annexation request. These are the statutory requirements outlined in the Colorado Revised Statutes concerning annexations. The area that is shaded does identify the area to be annexed. It does include the portion of the Mark Shuffle Road right away from the intersection of Link Road and CNS east to Furlong Circle. It also includes the three acres that is owned by the city of Fountain. There are two stem portions that extend off of Mark Shuffle Road and Link Road to the three-acre main site. Next slide. The annexation request has been reviewed in compliance with the state requirements outlined in Title 31 of the Colorado Revised Statutes. The annexation requirements require that all new annexations need a minimum of 16.6% contiguity requirement. That means that a minimum of 16.6% of the property boundary to be annexed is existing has existing contiguity to the city limits. This also requires minimum notices to all the taxing entities, and then four consecutive publications in a local newspaper. Staff finds that all of these requirements have been satisfactorily met, and would recommend approval of Resolution 20-092. That's the ninth medium. Next slide. Next slide. Again, the area being shown on the vicinity map is the area to be considered for the annexation. Is, next slide. The area to be annexed is approximately 6.7 acres. It is located at the intersection of Link Road and Mark Shuffle Road, and also includes the right-of-way, as I mentioned, from Mark Shuffle Road. The total perimeter is approximately 8,521 lineal feet, and there's existing contiguity on the north side of Mark Shuffle Road and along Link Road. Next slide. Next slide. Within the comprehensive development plan, the property to be annexed is within the urban growth boundary, and is also compliant with principle number one, which is to ensure that the logical extension of the city boundary occurs with new annexations. Next slide. Staff finds that the annexation request is located within the city's urban service and urban growth areas, and is also eligible for annexation. The city believes that the annexation will accommodate the orderly development of the community, and believes that the availability of the city's services and other benefits through annexation can be substantially met. Next slide. The annexation request was presented to the Planning Commission at the October 7th meeting, at which time they made a favorable recommendation by a vote of seven to zero. At tonight's meeting, it is staff's recommendation to recommend approval of ordinance 1755 on first reading to annex the request of the area known as Fountain Electric Substation Edition. Next slide. And then the last item that was read into the record was the initial zoning of the property. All annexed land that's annexed into the city must also be zoned within the city. It is the request that this area be zoned to be planned industrial district. As you can see on the vicinity map, this does differ from the annexation, because the remaining portion of the annexation was the right-of-way from Mark Shuffle Road, and the right-of-way is not zoned. Therefore, the request tonight for the planned industrial zoning is only for the land that is owned by the city. Next slide. The land that is owned by the city is approximately 3.9 acres. The city had acquired this land for the future location of an electric substation to support the future growth of the city. Next slide. And again, this is just the zoning exhibit within unincorporated El Paso County. The property is zoned A5, which is agricultural, with a minimum of a five-acre lot size, and it's within a commercial area of, a commercial area district overlay. Next slide. Within the comprehensive development plan, future land use. It does identify this area as single-family residential. Staff is supportive of the deviation from the plan, from the comprehensive development plan, and future land use, as public utilities are permitted within all zone districts. Next slide. Staff finds that the initial zoning request to the planned industrial district district is consistent with review criteria one, outlined within the zoning ordinance, Title 17 of the Fountain Municipal Code, Section 172450. This item was also presented at the October 7th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting, where they also made a favorable recommendation by a vote of seven to zero. And at tonight's meeting, staff would also make a recommendation of approval of ordinance 1756 on first reading of the initial zoning request to the planned industrial zone district. Are there any questions for staff?
Okay, so we've got three items there, and we'll just take questions for all of it, I guess. I'm gonna look to council to see if they have any questions to start. I'm not seeing any lights go on, any mics go on, I'll check with public. And no hands there. Okay. Wow. Okay, no questions, comments, or concerns, it seems. So we will go ahead, and if there's no further questions, then you guys are good on your end, right, staff?
Correct.
Okay, so we will go ahead and vote on the items. So I will, for item 9B, Resolution 209 20-092, I'll take a motion. Mr. Geek?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 20-092 on the first reading.
And Ms. Estes?
Second.
Mayor Ortega, I believe we lost your audio. Or I did. Can you, can everybody hear me?
I can hear you, Sylvia, but I cannot hear the mayor.
Likewise.
Same here.
I could hear everybody, but not Sylvia.
I can hear you now, Gabe, can you hear me?
I can hear you now, I must've had some internet issues here.
Great, okay, so it's my understanding that it's, we have a first and a second, did you call for a vote, sir?
Yes, I did.
Okay, Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to item 9C. This is a public hearing, I'm gonna ask for questions one more time. Really fast. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we will need a motion for first reading of ordinance number 1755. Mayor Protem?
I move to approve ordinance 1755 on first reading.
And Mr. Geek?
Second.
Okay, we do have a motion and second, and Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, and then we will move right into item 9D. We're still in the public hearing, I'll check one more time for any questions from staff on this one. Or council, I'm sorry. Mr. Applegate, I'm assuming you wanna make a motion, is this right?
Oh. No, I just left my mic on, but I'll make a motion.
Okay, hold, I'm still in public hearing, so I'll call on you in a second, hold on.
Okay.
Okay, so we don't have any public questions? Okay, so I will close our public hearing, and we'll need a motion for item number, or item 9D, first reading of ordinance number 1756, Mr. Applegate?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve ordinance 1756 on first reading.
And Mr. Geek?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you. Carl and gang, it sounds like you guys have a lot of work to get moving on, you're getting closer and closer to getting this thing put together, so we're excited for you guys.
Yes, thank you.
Item 9E, I'm open in a public hearing, oh yeah, no, thanks, Carl. Item 9E, I'm open in a public hearing, and first reading of ordinance number 1757, setting appropriations for the funds, offices, and departments of the city of Fountain, Colorado, for the fiscal year 2021, beginning January 1, 2021. Mr. Lewis?
Good evening, John Lewis, Finance Director for the city of Fountain. Also available online here is Shawna Dale, the Deputy Finance Director. And I believe all of the leadership team, department heads, available for any questions or comments that people have. This is our first public hearing for the 2021 budget. We do a 2021-22, 2022 biannual budget, and we've had a number of work sessions. Now, we have the first reading, and Exhibit A shows the revenue and expenditures by fund. Uh, now, uh, we, we have the first reading and Exhibit A shows the revenue and expenditures by fund. Uh, and in total for twenty twenty-one. Uh, in a column reading, first reading proposed budget twenty twenty-one. It's assumed that council will discuss this budget, possibly make adjustments. And assuming they do, then we will make those adjustments and present them as the final proposed budget for twenty twenty-one. Uh, in the second hearing. And hopeful approval of the budget ordinance on December eighth. So with that, um, I would, um, well, let's go to the slide that shows the, the general fund. Uh, here we see the column with the first reading, um, and the proposed numbers. And, um, when we skip down to the other slides, which we don't have to do yet, but when we do. You'll see all of the funds reported in a similar fashion with expenditures, revenues. And either increase or decrease in their fund balances. Uh, so with that, I would open it up to any questions or comments from council.
Sorry, I was on mute and I was here talking and. Don't hear me. Here we go. Let me look at attendees. Okay, questions from council. Okay, John, we, it looks like no one has their mic on for, oh, Ms. Thompson, go ahead.
Yeah, so I had thrown out an idea at, at, just an idea, you know, for people to, to talk about. Um, and I think the staff took it back and talked about it for, um, you know, adding some funding to the, um. Streets and roads department, and I just wondered if anybody wanted to discuss that. Um, any further tonight and add anything out of that idea or what the staff came back with. Do we want to discuss it? Tonight and see if that's something we want to consider adding to the budget.
Mr. Mayor, can I speak to that briefly?
Yeah, I was, yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, I just was waiting for that to be brought up. The proposal was made to, uh, take one point two million dollars and, uh, apply that towards, um, improvements to neighborhood roadways. Which we obviously think is very needed in this community and, and just a great, um, concept as far as getting dollars out onto those streets. However, as we, as we took that back and we, we reviewed that, um, with our staff, the recommendation was made as we reviewed that, that, you know, before we go ahead. And apply dollars towards, um, a number of roads, let's move forward with. An item that was in the strategic plan, and that item was a pavement, uh, study. We really want to put together a pavement management plan that's sort of based on a data-driven approach, so. We would hire a firm, uh, rather than applying dollars right now, we would apply lesser amount of funds and, and our recommendation. Is, or, excuse me, our estimates about a hundred and fifty thousand to complete a pavement study. Of our, um, road system, and then that study would come back to us and make some recommendations as far as, um. What roads should be prioritized, what types of applications to put on them, et cetera. And they would work with our, um, professional staff here to identify what those roads would be. That way we're not putting, um, good money after bad, if you will. We could be good stewards of the limited funds that we have. And so the recommendation would be that for twenty twenty-one, if the council would, would consider it. To authorize, um, up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand. I only say a hundred and seventy-five thousand just because. When we got those estimates, we're not sure, you know, how prices may have changed, but we want to put together a formal RFP. And send that out to engineering firms that specialize in this and get quotes back. And, uh, we think will actually be one fifty or less, but I just want to give us a little bit of room. Uh, but to apply those dollars towards this pavement study. And then, then we would, um, discuss when the completion of that study was done, we would discuss the impacts of that. For possibly the twenty twenty-one budget. So that's part one. Part two, the other part of that was requesting an additional fifty thousand dollars in the road maintenance line item. So currently that's, um, uh, at one fifty, and so the request would be to bump that up to two hundred even. Those are the dollars that we use for just the, the day-to-day road maintenance, filling potholes, um, you know, those sorts of things. I think I captured everything. Todd, is there anything I missed with that?
Uh, no, Scott, that was a good summary. I just want to make sure that whenever we go out and get initial estimates from these guys, which is what we, we kind of have done at this point. There's outliers that always come into this, so I want to make sure that we're, uh, we give ourselves that room. So we're thinking, Scott, we're going to be safe around two hundred. Um, if it comes in any less than that, I think the council's confident that we're going to get it as, as, uh, inexpensive as we can. Um, but we will be bringing those bids back, but it may get up there when you start getting the outliers involved in this. Um, so I just want to make sure that doesn't surprise anybody if, if we are above that one seventy-five to two hundred, but, uh, we'll make sure we bring that back.
Thank you, sir.
So that would, oh, I'm sorry, do I still continue?
Thanks for that.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry. Okay, so that would change the initial proposal that I put out there to start the discussion and, you know, putting some more towards this, um. Strategic plan of transportation. Um, that would change the proposal to, to basically what Scott just described. Uh, the up to two hundred thousand dollars for the, um, survey to, and to the study. And then for this one year, adding fifty thousand dollars to, um, the street and road maintenance budget, and those funds would come out of reserves. So I just didn't know if anybody wanted to discuss it any further, if there was interest, um, and what, what people think.
Uh, I can start off. I, I think it, you know, I, uh, I like the idea that they're going with that. It makes sense and, um, you know, it just, that's a. Uh, there's a lot involved with roads and I, you know, just, um, not that that's what you were doing, it's just I think the public thinks. You know, we've, we've got bad roads, let's just go fix them, and it's just that easy, and it's, and it's not, and there's, there's a, there's a system that goes into it, and then. Depending on the road and those types of things, and so I think this is a good plan, and I think that got that discussion going here. Um, as to how we can kind of really focus on that, um, in the future, so, and I think throwing this amount at it to, to at least get us in a spot where maybe we could. Look at this maybe a year. Um, or two years and see, you know, if that would maybe then have a better impact then. I think that's a good, good place to start. Um, Mr. Geek.
Yes, I was wondering how does that affect our percentage of our. Our funds going forward.
Our reserves?
Yes. Do we have any idea what that would be then? Yeah, the, the net.
Yeah, I'll leave that to John or Scott to come up with.
Yeah, and I could, um, Scott, please, uh, feel free to, to jump in here too. The, the additional amount, uh, would mean that we'd have a, um, decrease then of about, um, seventy thousand. Assuming we spend the two hundred and fifty thousand, we'd have about a seventy thousand dollar. Decrease in reserves with this, um, with this budget proposal. However, uh, we, as Scott has pointed out in a summary letter. Uh, due to the decreased spending and increased revenues, uh, received this year. Uh, we will be over the twenty percent, um, going into the year. Uh, over the twenty percent reserve level that you'd like to keep, so, uh, we should still be, uh, at or above the twenty percent. Uh, level with this proposal. Okay, that was, that was my only concern, and this, maybe we should have done this before we did the roadway. Uh, group and put that before the people. Maybe that would have been the right thing to do. And we probably need to make sure we get that done before they even think about putting that, uh, on a ballot again.
This is Dietra Duncan. Um, the, um, the question that I have is when we met in person the last time with Sharon's, um, recommendation. Did this recommendation go to the roadway group?
Go ahead.
Hi, Dietra, this is Scott. No, sorry, can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, I'm not. My, everything's just really wacky on my end, so go ahead and keep going.
Okay, I can hear you now. Okay. Um, we, we, uh, took it to our professional staff, which is Bob McDonald, we have engineering staff that have reviewed this concept, and then Todd. And, um, and they really felt like, number one, this is our, this is a priority in our strategic plan. And so, um, they wanted to make sure that proposal's in front of you. Now, this pavement study will go to the roadway focus group as well, and they will, they'll get the results of that as well, and they'll, and I, they'll be working with Bob and Todd to. Figure out what we do with that, but as far as the proposal goes, we are really just essentially proposing what's in our general, uh, excuse me, our general plan, our strategic plan.
Great, I, I like that we're sticking to the strategic plan.
Okay, um, my wifi seems to be really wonky right now. Um, I've asked my company anything they can, and no one's on it. Maybe some back and forth, you know, we're just to keep the meeting. Um, so if I don't see any other comments or questions from council.
Again, uh, this is John Lewis.
All right, uh, I'm going to go to public.
We're, we're on the general fund here. We will go to the other funds in the next slides.
Okay. Okay, well, go ahead and move forward from here, John.
Okay, uh, next, uh, PowerPoint slide, please. Thank you. Here we see the, uh, the water fund, um, and, uh. Due to the fact that, uh, we've been able to find ways to decrease expenditures. Uh, the net result in the water fund will be an increase in the reserves of four hundred and forty thousand eight ninety-six. Uh, additionally, in the electric fund, there will also be an increase in, uh, reserves of three hundred and ninety-eight thousand oh forty-six. In both of these funds, uh, the increase in reserves is necessary not only to get up to the recommended reserve levels. Uh, that we have stated in our financial policies and procedures, but also to prepare for what additional capital. Uh, we would need to spend in future years for the, the growth that is coming. And I know when we went through the rate studies for electric, uh, quite a bit of that, uh, growth was, um, that is anticipated was discussed. So with, uh, that, I'll, if we could go to the next slide, which shows all of the other funds. And, uh, all of the revenue and expenditures that are suggested for each of those funds. Um, I'm not sure if we, if, if there's, uh, going to be some discussion on possible adjustments, but certainly. Um, we are open to that, uh, the total for all of these other funds, ambulance, drainage, conservation trust. Heritage Maintenance District, Volunteer Fire, General Improvement Districts one and two, the insurance fund. Volunteer Fire Pension Fund, Public Transportation Fund, Street Resurfing, Resurfacing and Street Capital Improvements. All of them, um, together have an addition to the reserves of seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand seven sixty net. Uh, the only one that, uh, the only two that, that have a, um. A transfer from the reserves are volunteer fire pension, and we have substantial amount of reserves there to pull from. And also drainage, we have quite a bit of, um, reserves there that we can pull from, so they will still, uh, have positive fund balances. So with that, I would ask if there are any questions or comments, uh, from council on water and electric fund or any of these other funds.
Okay, um. I don't know if you guys could hear me yet or not, but, uh, I reset my wifi, so I think it's working better. I don't see any lights on for council at this point for the other funds. Um, Mr. Rick from public did have a question on the last item, so, um, you can go ahead and. Ask your question.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh, question is for Mr. Trainer. Uh, you want to do a pavement study? Uh, and as I heard you, you said you wanted to have somebody make recommendations. As to what we should prioritize as far as fixing streets. What's that going to give us that the roadway focus group isn't giving us?
Well, and I'm going to defer to Bob, uh, McDonald. He's on the call as well, and he can jump on with the specifics, but what it gives you, and I'll, I'm going to give you the really high level. Um, it gives you professional engineers and their equipment, and they actually physically go around to roads in the community doing tests. And Bob can speak to that far better than I can, and then they make recommendations ba- based on, um, based on engineering standards of where the best bang for the buck is essentially. So Bob, I'll hand it over to you.
And same, manager, excellent points. Uh, that's exactly basically what we're doing right now is although I go out and I evaluate, we're doing a system now. Where it's basically a very subjective, uh, study of what the roads look like based on basically a surface look at the, we know this road is bad. Uh, this firm comes in and they actually do a lot of physical testing on each roadway. Uh, they use a lot of LiDAR equipment and also, uh, other weight type equipment. That not only tests the structure of the existing pavement, but the, the underlying base course and what the structure looks like underneath there. Based on a lot of that and a lot of other, uh, studies that they do on the pavement, smoothness, ride quality and things like that. They make recommendations based on our existing funding, on what we should prioritize to preserve the current roadways that we have. And where we should prioritize monies in the future to help, uh, not only preserve what's in good shape. Uh, but prioritize what we should be spending money on in the future to, to, to make that money go as far as we possibly can with the limited resources that we have.
So what I'm hearing, Bob, is that, um, the engineers will be able to tell us exactly which streets we need to do redigs. Which we can do, uh, just mill the top and cover it again, and which ones. We can just, uh, chip seal and continue on. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, but it, absolutely, uh, that's, that's basically, that's a very good summation of what it does, but it goes a lot, a lot more in depth than that. Uh, it tells us overall, um, exactly kind of what the overall structure, what we're trying to do now, what, what they're going to take care of in probably a few months. Is something that I've been working on since I came here and just because of all the other responsibilities. And again, when I go out and I, I look at the condition of our roadway based on alligatoring, based on transport acts, based on, uh, you know, the clay. That we're dealing with our cross creek neighborhoods and heritage neighborhoods, uh, it's, it's still. It's still a lot more subjective than what we're going to get from, uh, from this firm, whoever does. Of course, we're going to have to go out for bids, uh, and see who comes back, uh, within our price range, of course, but, uh, after that. It, it's just a lot more of a scientific, engineering study to really show us what condition, the overall condition of the city streets are in. Uh, and as brought up earlier, uh, I think it's something that we really need to work on in the future, that if we are going to go forward again and ask the citizens of Fountain for more tax monies. To help repair the road, I think this is a more, um, data-based and data-driven approach. Uh, to where we're not just, we're not, we're, it's an outside entity, uh, that's coming up with these decisions or coming up with the recommendations anyway, of where we put our monies. And I think, uh, based on the research that I've done, especially. uh, based on the research that I've done, especially last year, our college initiative failed. Uh, pretty much every other municipality that passed a tax initiative for, to increase or to, to improve their streets, they had already gone through this type of a study, and it's basically a first step, uh, in deciding how and where money should be spent.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Scott. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rick. Uh, thanks, Bob, on that, uh, good summation of where we're headed on that. Okay, any other questions? I'm gonna look back at council as well. On all other funds, any questions? Okay, John, I'm seeing no questions.
Okay, uh, well, with no questions or comments, do we, um, do we want to make those adjustments for the, and I, I'm just trying to clarify at this point, for the full, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, fifty thousand of which would be increased road maintenance and two hundred thousand, uh, for potential study or up to two hundred thousand for a potential study that we think, um, should be uh, lower than the two hundred thousand, but we won't know till we go out to bid. Um, so do I have approval to go ahead and make those adjustments?
Um, John, I think what we will do is, uh, when council makes that motion, I will have that person make mention of those in that way. And so, uh,
Great.
I'm not seeing, it was, because we're still in the public hearing, so I, I wanna make sure that everyone's good. Um, are, so are you ready, John, for a motion?
Yes, I would like to hear a motion to approve, uh, the first reading of the ordinance.
Okay, uh, with, with any other additions or things like that that are needed.
Yeah.
Scott, are you good?
Yes, sir. I think you'll just, whenever you're ready, just close the public hearing and then take the motion, but we're good on our end.
Right. Okay, so, uh, I, I don't wanna close it quite yet. I just wanna make sure everyone's had a chance, and so. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and close our public hearing. And, um, Ms. Thompson, would you like to go ahead and make the motions and add those items that you had, uh, brought forward?
Yes, give me just a moment to make sure I'm on the right page. Okay, um, yes, I moved to approve first reading of ordinance number seventeen fifty-seven. Uh, the first reading of the budget with the, um, changes of two hundred thousand dollars for the roadway study and fifty thousand dollars added to this street budget. Does that work?
I'm gonna say yes. Uh, no one else has said anything, so, uh, I think, and, uh, Scott does every, that, that sounds good, right? Sylvia, Detroit, whoever.
That's perfect.
Okay. Okay, great. Okay, thank you, Ms. Thompson. And then I've got everyone's lights lit up, so I'll go with Ms. Estes.
I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and second for approval of our, um, ordinance number one seven five seven on first reading. Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes, and thank you, everyone.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes, and I wanna thank everybody in the staff for all the hard work.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
All right, um, that was painless. I'm glad.
Thank you.
We made it through. Yep, thank you, John, and, and everybody, uh, for your hard work. I know this year has just been crazy with COVID throwing the wrench that it did and everything and trying to get a two-year budget done. In the middle of all of it with a brand-new program, uh, did create some issues, and I think we made it through okay. We still have second reading coming up, so I don't wanna, you know, say a whole lot yet, but, uh, we should be okay. So again, thanks for everybody's hard work. Uh, thanks, Ms. Thompson, for, um, coming up with some ideas to help with our roads, um, and get us moving forward on those a little bit better. So, um, we will go from there. We are done with our items for tonight. We'll move on to correspondence comments and ex officio reports. I don't, I listed everybody that I saw that I normally would call. I know there are other staff members, so if you have something you'd like to speak to after I call, um, uh, in between Mr. Trilch and Ms. Huffman, because I like to let Ms. Huffman have the, um, the, the end to kind of close us out and get us to where we go, need to go next. Uh, if you need to say anything, please let me know in the chat window or just put your mic on. So with that, I'll start with, uh, Scott Trainer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, in the interest of time, the only thing I will say is I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving week next week. Thank you.
All right. Yep, thank you. Uh, Mr. Evans?
Uh, Mayor and council and public, I'd like to just let everybody know, we, we are making some adjustments over at the, uh, county health, uh, facility area. Um, as we're seeing across the nation and across our region, the number of tested, uh, individuals is going up, so we're gonna make some adjustments into another location for that testing facility for El Paso County Health. I wanna make sure that, that you all are aware of some departments that have jumped in to really help us do that, and that's Sylvia, uh, Jim and their parks department. Uh, that's Bob and his streets department. And really, without our electric department doing this for the entire Fountain Valley, uh, we couldn't be making this adjustment. And that specifically, we're gonna have to move, uh, the Conex that they're working out of now and possibility moving to a second Conex, um, if they, uh, with vaccinations coming. Electric is jumping on this, and in the next couple of days, they're gonna get some temporary, um, electric, uh, outlets for those Conexes for us to be able to move them. So I really like to give credit to the electric department, uh, Cody, their foreman, their guys. Carl jumped right in as soon as we reached out that we needed help for them. So I think it's really important for everybody to know all the departments are, uh, anytime we call them a reference COVID, are just stepping up to the plate. So we really appreciate Carl and his guys and Dan and, um, and that whole department making that happen for everybody down here in the valley. And that's all I've got.
Okay, great. Thanks. Awesome. Thank you for everybody pitching in on that. Uh, I've heard the lines have just gotten really long at all, though, so any help we can get to move those people through will be better. Um, Troy, uh, anything for Mr. Johnson tonight?
Nothing for me, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Troy. Uh, Mr. Blanketship?
All, all's good in utilities this evening, Mayor. Thank you very much. Um, and a happy, uh, very happy Thanksgiving to, uh, all, all the council.
All right, thank you. Um, Mr. Lewis, anything further?
No, thank you, Mayor, and happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
All righty. Uh, Mr. Trilch?
A good evening, Mayor and council. I have nothing for this evening. Uh, happy Thanksgiving.
All right, and you know what? I did see, um, our Commander Lewis. All right, do you have anything tonight from the police department?
I do not, sir, other than, uh, the chief wanted me to let everybody know that the baby mama and he are all doing well.
Wonderful. Um, yeah, and just, uh, just in case, uh, some of you don't know yet by now, uh, Chief, uh, and his wife had a, welcomed their baby, little, little baby girl, um, Reagan, uh, a few weeks back. And, uh, there were a little bit of complication. She was, uh, born a little premature, but, uh, she was, uh, kind of went through the process, was at a really good hospital, at Children's Hospital North, yeah, at Memorial Hospital, and, uh, they took really good care of her and, of course, mom and dad, and they got to bring her home last week, so she's been at home and keeping mom and dad up at night, too. So, uh, that's been, uh, they're kind of relearning something. Well, at least Chris is relearning some things and, uh, forgot what it meant to be up all night listening to, um, a baby's needs. So I did talk to Chris the other day, and they're, they're doing really good, and they do appreciate, um, everyone's, uh, thoughts and prayers as, as they made it through the, the toughest part. Now they're, they're in a different tough part, but it's a good part. So I, I'm excited for their family. Um, thanks, Commander. Uh, Chief Maxson?
Uh, nothing from the fire department this evening. Uh, we wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and, and be safe if you fry your turkey.
Oh, thanks. All right, with that, I don't see any other, um, comments from other staff members. Uh, Paul or Lisa, anything from IT?
No, thank, no, thank you. Have a very happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, thank you, guys. And, uh, we, I think we went a lot smoother tonight, except on my end, we had the issues there. So, uh, Ms. Huffman? Anything from clerk's office?
Uh, just real quickly, I wanted to thank everybody that was able to make it out to the ribbon cutting at Fountain Mesa Park. Um, it was a very prideful moment, and I wanted to publicly thank our, uh, park superintendent, Jim Watson, who wasn't able to make the ribbon cutting for all of his hard work that he put into making that happen for us.
All right, great. And, uh, yeah, thank, thanks to everybody. You guys did an awesome job with that. Um, okay, with that, I will go through council. I'll start with Ms. Duncan. Oh, it says she's offline for some reason. Um, okay, well, we'll see if she pops back on. Okay, uh, Mr. Geek?
Yes, I just wanna thank everybody or make, thank everybody for all the hard work and, uh, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Applegate?
Yes, I have nothing. Just happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Rick. Thank you, Richard. Uh, Ms. Estes?
Nothing big. I do, do wanna extend out my congratulations with, uh, Councilmember Thompson to the Parks Department on a fantastic new playground. All ages of kids are gonna enjoy that. Um, I took a spin on the new merry-go-round, and it's wonderful. So good job, guys, and happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
All right, awesome. Uh, Mayor Protem?
Got nothing else for me other than happy Thanksgiving and, uh, thanks for all the hard work that everybody put in to get a, to get a really good budget put together.
All right, thank you. Uh, Ms. Thompson?
No, nothing else, but I'd like to thank staff again for taking time to meet with me over the budget in the last couple of weeks and, um, get all the questions answered before the meeting. I'm sure you all appreciated that. So everybody have a happy Thanksgiving and, uh, stay safe and well.
All right. Um, and with that, I have nothing further. Uh, uh, of course, everyone have a great Thanksgiving and a week off and, and, uh, you know, we'll do our best as council to leave you guys alone on your vacation and, and, uh, just, uh, be thankful for everything that we have and in the midst of everything going on. So just, uh, thank you, everyone. Uh, we do have, uh, two GIDs, uh, tonight, two items that should go pretty quickly. So, um, before I do that, we're gonna adjourn our city council meeting, and then we'll re-adjourn as, um, the ex officio boards for those GIDs. Um, we have no executive session. Our next meeting will be on December eighth, twenty twenty, and as you planned for December, remember, we're gonna have the eighth and then the following week, um, which would be, uh, I think around fifteenth. So, um, we should be good. With that, we are adjourned. And, Miss Sylvia, just let us know when we, uh, are ready to go into GID one.
You can go ahead and begin, sir.
We can?
Yeah.
Awesome. Okay. All right. Uh, so I will call to order the, uh, so let's see, regular city council meeting, the city council shall reconvene as the ex officio board of directors, uh, the Fountain General Improvement District number one for action on the following items. I'm opening a public hearing and resolution two zero dash zero nine three, a resolution adopting a budget for Fountain General Improvement District number one for fiscal year FY twenty twenty-one, assessing a levy on taxable property and providing for certifying a levy to El Paso County. Mr. Lewis?
Yes, thank you again, uh, Finance Director John Lewis. Uh, this, uh, GID was established back in two thousand and seven. Does have twelve mills attached to it, and the, those twelve mills, uh, approximate now um, hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year. The, when it was set up, uh, the council had suggested that the first one point seven million, uh, go towards public safety improvements such as, you know, generally, fire and police stations or related expenses. Uh, we're not there yet. We, we have, uh, by the end of twenty twenty-two, we'll have about a million dollars. Um, money has not been spent out of this. Uh, so we've been adding to the reserves. The end of this year, we'll have about seven hundred and twenty thousand. So, um, so it's, it's adding up, and if we could go to the next slide. Uh, because these are special improvement districts, they have to be, um, approved separately, um, you know, and together with the budget. So uh, this, uh, resolution is for, uh, GID one, and, um, um, okay, I, the next slide was GID two. So let's go back to GID one, if we could, please, uh, go back one slide. Uh, the, uh, total revenue coming in for twenty-one, uh, is property taxes of about a hundred and thirty-three thousand, uh, almost ten thousand in specific ownership taxes, and about a thousand in interest income. Uh, and again, no expenditures. We haven't been making expenditures out of this. So, um, we will, uh, have approximately eight hundred and sixty-five thousand in reserves by the end of, uh, twenty twenty-one. Um, so again, this has to be approved separately, um, and, uh, council is the ex officio board. So with that, I would like to, uh, ask for approval from council, uh, for this budget and for setting the twelve mills for GID one.
Okay, um, we are in a public hearing. Does council have any questions for staff? And does public have any questions for staff on this item? Okay, seeing no questions. Uh, I will close the public hearing. And what would council like to do with this item? Or the board, sorry. Uh, Mr. Geek?
I'd like to make a, uh, resolution twenty dash zero nine three, approve.
All right. And, uh, Mayor Protem?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion second for approval of, uh, resolution two zero dash zero nine three of GID one. Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Um, we'll move right into, uh, uh, general improvement district number two for action on the following items. I'm opening a public hearing and resolution number two zero dash zero nine four, a resolution adopting a budget for Fountain General Improvement District number two for fiscal year FY twenty twenty-one, assessing a levy on taxable property and providing for certifying a levy to El Paso County. Mr. Lewis?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, GID two was established to, uh, transfer some of the costs of developing property in the district. And so the mill levy of ten mills was set up, um, and it exempted, uh, properties in the district from certain expansion fees, water tap fees, et cetera. Uh, at this, uh, point, we still have not spent anything out of this, uh, fund. Uh, and, uh, the revenue is approximately, well, in, in twenty nineteen, it was fifty-seven thousand. And, uh, we, we budgeted a little bit less than that in twenty twenty, uh, but, uh, we were wrong in our calculations, because in fact, uh, it's coming in much higher than that. In fact, in twenty twenty-one, due to the growth of, uh, properties in that district, we'll have about ninety-three thousand in property tax revenue with the ten mills. And between that specific ownership tax and interest income, we'll increase the reserves approximately ninety-five thousand. So that will give us about two hundred and sixty-five thousand in reserves by the end of twenty twenty-one. Again, um, Again, no expenditures are planned. We're just increasing the reserves on that. So with that, I would request that the board of GID 2 approve the resolution number 20-094, which approves the budget for the General Improvement District Number Two and the 10 mills mill levy certified for El Paso County.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Again, we are in a public hearing. Do, does anybody on council have a question at this point? For GID 2? Mr. Applegate, did you have a question?
Yes. Yeah, I was wondering the reimbursement. I wondered whether reimbursement takes place for the city service expansion fee and for the water tap fee and plot plan fee and residential construction evaluation steady surcharge. When does the city and utility get their money?
Hi, Richard. This is Scott. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just have to, really anytime we want to, we just have to budget that in. The numbers in this, in this fund have been so small today, it just hasn't been a primary focal point. But now that we're starting getting some dollars in there, the vast majority of that are water-related. But yeah, I was just thinking as you were, right before you talked that we really ought to be looking at starting to pull those dollars back to the utilities that it came out of as well as the general fund piece. So we probably should look at that this next year and come back to the council with a proposal on that. It's a formal proposal.
Okay, yeah.
And again, by, by the end of this year, we'll have approximately 170,000 and by the end of next year, 264,000. So that, that's the amount of money that we're talking about and we certainly can look at that. I'm, I'm sure there are some things that we could use that money for.
Well, yeah, it's owed to the city and to the water.
Yeah, those would end up, those would end up being like straight transfers right from there to pay for, you know, the water needs. And I don't, I don't remember the percents off the top of my head, but that's what we'd want to look at, just to pull them straight out for those.
Well, it's 21% of the water tap fee. So that you'd have to calculate that out over the period of time.
Right, yeah, definitely.
Okay, I just want to make sure we get our money on it.
All right, any other questions? Okay, I don't see any from public either. Okay, so with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. And what would council like to do? Or the board? Mr. Applegate, did you want to make a motion?
Uh, no, I was, I just left my mic on, sorry.
Mr. Geek?
I make a motion to approve resolution 20-094.
Ms. Estes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of resolution 20-094 for GID 2. Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes, and I agree with Mr. Applegate, and I was going to ask that question too. He beat me to it. Let's look at how we can start reimbursing some of those departments.
Ms. Estes, how do you vote? Councilmember Estes?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes, and I hope we can get our money back on that.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, and that is it for this evening. I hope you all have a wonderful week. We'll see you later.